Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Thanks for attending this work session. And on that note, we're going to start a little out of order. We're going to start with page seventeen, twenty-one dash eighteen, Mrs. Bevins, and cold rolling mill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for letting me go out of order so my, um, people testifying can get back up the roof, um, from out of state. Um, Bill twenty-one eighteen, um, is deals with the zoning regulation for cold milling, uh, for cold rolling mill. Uh, the bill adds language to the Baltimore County zoning regulations, uh, to allow cold rolling mills in manufacturing light, uh, zones if located in the industrial major, um, districts. These essentially limit the mills to those, um, properties owned ML and industrial parks. The bill would allow one hundred and fifty manufacturing jobs to come to Middle River. We can all clap if you want. (laughing). Uh, the location would be at the, uh, the former Worthington Steel site at Kelso Drive, if you're familiar with that, and Martin Boulevard. The county zoning regulations does not currently permit, um, or define cold milling, cold rolling mills. Why can't I say that? That's awful. Uh, the lack of cold milling, uh, rolling mills in the regulations would prohibit a manufacturer from bringing these jobs to Middle River. Um, I've talked extensively with the, um, with my colleagues, and I think they're all willing to support this. They know the importance of, um, jobs, um, coming to Baltimore County specifically and, uh, um, the sixth district. And this is just one of those issues again where something isn't defined, uh, specifically. We have hot rolling mills in the definition, but not cold. Uh, so that's all this legislation is doing. So I'm hoping that, um, my colleagues will support, uh, support this bill. And I believe we have speakers?
Yes. And, um, I guess before we get started with the speakers, let me just say, I think this is, uh, when I read it, I thought this is not only good news for Essex.
Middle River.
Middle River. Uh, and Baltimore County, but, uh, this type of manufacturing is probably good for the country.
It is.
I mean, when I first read it, I thought, man, I didn't think that we were opening up any type of steel mills anywhere. Uh, losing it all to places like China.
Well, this is for aluminum.
Okay. Good. Why don't we start with the speakers? Uh, any more comments before we move on with the speakers? Okay. Mr. Larry Schmidt?
Good afternoon, Councilman Jones and members of the council. I'm Larry Schmidt, and I know you know, you know me, I'm a land use attorney here in Baltimore County. And, uh, Councilwoman Bevins stole a little my thunder in terms of, uh, this is an anomaly in the zoning regulations that presently hot, what are known as hot rolling mills are permitted in the MH zone, but there is no mention anywhere in the county zoning regulations of cold rolling, rolling mills, which both are an aluminum or steel manufacturing process. And as, uh, the councilwoman indicated, uh, Empire Resources, which is a multinational company, is proposing to come to Kelso Avenue. And when we noticed, it's an MLIM zone site, and when we noticed that there was nothing in the zoning regulations, I had asked her and Mr. Petticourt as well about that, and this regulation was drafted. Uh, my clients are here, they came down from New Jersey today, two gentlemen from, um, uh, Empire Resources Incorporated. And I'll let Mr. Donahue come up and talk, um, if anybody has any questions about what a cold rolling mill is. So unless there are any questions of me.
We just can't say it.
I can't say it.
That's right, that's right. Thank you all.
Sure. Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Callum Donahue. I work for Empire Resources, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of a company called Tachan International, multinational organization, uh, for the US, North American operations based in California. Empire Resources, uh, has been enjoying its time in Baltimore County for approximately twenty years. Uh, the facility that we own on Kelso, uh, used to be owned by Worthington Steel, that ironically used to run a steel cold rolling facility. Um, so we're, we're doing the like, but now in, in aluminum. We like to call ourselves the lightweight, so, um, the, the, one of the, there's a, there's a bunch of good things about this. One, our distribution center that we're occupying today. We're going to keep that in Baltimore County. We're, we're currently looking for another facility within Baltimore County, and we've, we've narrowed that down to three options, uh, that we, we need to secure fairly soon. What we're looking to do in a cold mill operation is, uh, it's very clean, it's very, um, environmentally friendly. It, it's going to provide, as we talked about, a hundred and fifty, um, manufacturing jobs. Um, manufacturing jobs obviously higher paying than the distribution center jobs that we will still maintain, but, uh, bringing in new jobs of manufacturing nature. The capital expenditure is approximately forty million dollars, um, which, which we're happy to do. It's a twenty-four hour operation, which we feel spreads out the traffic a little bit, obviously heavier during the day with the administration people, lighter in the evening. Truck traffic similar to what's there today. We do move a lot of, uh, goods in and out of that facility today. Um, so it would be a similar type operation in terms of, of truck traffic that we're experiencing today. Um, noise, emissions, wa- wastewater, et cetera. Uh, we've done these sort of things in manufacturing sites throughout the country before, um, and, and we, we know what it takes, and we will be obviously following code, and we feel we can meet within all the, those regulations within those areas. So that's what we're here to do. Uh, we're, we're, we're on the hurry up offense, and I could talk about aluminum all day, and I, and I don't want to bore you with it all, but w- we would like to get this going and start actually producing metal out of that facility by Q one of next year. So it's a pretty aggressive time, timetable. Um, hopefully we can get it done, but, uh, we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We thank you, and before you go, is this, uh, is this a new process?
No, it is not. It, it's a process that's been around for, for a long time, but you ni- you hit the nail right in the head. So what's, what's driving this is, uh, back in November of last year, the DOC, uh, started a self-investigation on anti-dumping against Chinese aluminum. And this is what's driving this. So it's not done yet, uh, actually the countervailing duties will be announced in the middle of next month, but we know it's going to happen. And so it's bringing jobs, bringing technology back to the US, and so we're really excited about that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Almond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, do you see this as a trend moving forward? I mean, do you think there will be more, uh, of, of what you're doing?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say, because there's certainly US comp corporations, some of our competitors that have idle capacity, they just may restart some of their capacity. So at this point, it's hard to say, but, uh, it is a trend. You see a lot of the, the two-three-two that's been in the news lately against steel and aluminum. That's all going to help bring manufacturing back to the US.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I just want to say, I just want to say thank you for coming to District Six.
No problem.
And, uh, on behalf of Baltimore County, we like to thank you for coming to Baltimore County. Uh, we welcome you. You say you've been here for twenty-one years, that's good, and we want you to be successful. So if you need anything at all, don't hesitate to ask Councilwoman Bevins. She'll take care of it for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Now moving back to our regular order of business. We'll start with, uh, page one, Bill eleven dash eighteen, Ms. Andrea Van Arsdale. You can come and tell us something about demolition.
I have a couple of issues. Do you want to just do the demolition and then come back for the fiscal matters, or would you like to do?
Well, why don't we just, uh, do all your things while you're here? With, starting with the demolition, and then we'll move along to your fiscal matters, and then you can be out of our hair. I mean, you can go back and do some work.
(laughing). All right. The administration is requesting supplemental appropriation of state funds totaling five hundred thousand dollars to the grant funds for demolition of the former Eastern Family Resource Center. The funds will be provided to MedStar Franklin Square Medical Center to subsidize the cost to demolish the former, uh, Eastern Family Resource Center. Um, Franklin Square Hospital will then construct a new seventy-five thousand square foot surgical center on the site.
Any questions?
I just have a comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to, um, thank you, uh, for this five hundred thousand dollars. The building's actually already gone, in case no one has noticed, it is gone. Um, and, you know, Frank, uh, MedStar Franklin Square is the largest employer in my district, and I'm really grateful for the jobs that they provide and their interest in the community. And this is going to enable them to have all their surgery facilities in one area instead of outpatient in one area and inpatient in another. Um, so it's much better than building a parking garage. So, um, I'm very thankful, so, um, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And as a result, we were then able to construct the new Eastern Family Resource Center Shelter, however one wants to call it, which is the subject of the other two.
Well, and I have to tell you, it's beautiful. If you stand across the street, directly across the street in front of the Medical Arts Building, you can see the demolition now of what was just taken down in a big hole in the ground. And then all you have to do is look a little bit to your right, and you see the beautiful new center up on the hill, which is really a very, very nice facility. I've toured that facility, and, um, it's something to really be proud of. Baltimore County should be very proud of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions for Ms. Van Arsdale as it relates to demolition? Okay, Ms. Van Arsdale, now we'll move right along to page eighteen, Amendment Number Four, for a contract to the Community Assistance Network. And if you want to talk about the Saint Vincent de Paul, I understand they are similar in nature.
Yes. And I have with me, um, in case you ask very specific questions, Colleen Mahoney. She is chief of our grants administration unit, which deals with all of the homeless issues in Baltimore County. So, um, so what you have before you are two, uh, contract amendments. Uh, one to, uh, in order to extend the contracts that we currently have with, uh, Community Assistance Network for the east side shelter and the men's shelter on the west side. And fiscal matter two, which is Saint Vincent de Paul, who operates the Hannah Moore Shelter. And what we'd like to do is have these contracts extended for up to six months pending the completion of the RFP that we issued, uh, earlier this year, and which we expect, um, the bids to come in on Thursday, and to finalize those in, and let the contracts extend until we make a final decision as a result of that RFP.
Okay. Any questions, comments? As always, we appreciate all the work you're doing in terms of, uh, try to provide some shelter for our homeless population.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Now we will go back, uh, to page five, Mike Fields, Bill twelve dash eighteen, Ethics Law Amendments.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Bill twelve eighteen is a sort of extensive bill making changes to the county ethics law, but in the end, it's really a housekeeping bill. Um, as the council is probably aware, state law provides that the, uh, local ethics laws for elected officials have to be more or less the same as they are in terms of, uh, conflict of interest and financial disclosure for members of the state legislature. And then for the rest of us, the laws have to be similar. In the county, we haven't really done much to draw a distinction between the two. So what it means, though, is that when the General Assembly makes changes to its own law about conflict of interest and financial disclosure, then a requirement falls upon the counties to make changes that are similar to the state laws, the state law changes. So that's initially what drove this bill. We got a letter from the State Ethics Commission requiring us to make four changes to our local law, and then authorizing us to make a few other changes. Um, and then, as I think I said to Mrs. Almond more than once, the review that we did for the training led us to look at things a little bit different as well. And so we have some, some issues that we want to get addressed here, but in the end, it's all housekeeping. So I'm just going to go over the changes fairly quickly. Um, in terms of the mandatory changes, under, uh, current law, former members of the county council may not assist or represent a person in a matter that's the subject of legislative action for one year after they leave the county council. We now have to apply that prohibition to the county executive, and that's again because of a bill. It's chapter thirty-one from the two thousand and seventeen session, which applied it to the governor. So now we have to apply the same provision, the same prohibition to the county executive. Uh, the next thing is it's starting in twenty nineteen. The county must redact the home addresses of public officials when allowing the public to see their financial disclosure statements. Um, because as you know, the statements are subject to disclosure. Um, the county has to add a new provision, this is all in the bill, prohibiting a lobbyist who becomes a public official from participating in a matter that the lobbyist worked on when he or she was a lobbyist during their first year as a public official. It applies to all, if the, if a lobbyist becomes like an official in the executive branch, it applies. If the lobbyist goes to the Board of Appeals, it applies, but if the lobbyist goes to an unpaid board of commission, the prohibition doesn't apply. But that's kind of where it divides up. Um, the county also has to add a provision in our financial disclosure statement, requiring the filer to disclose whether the filer spouses a regulated lobbyist who engages the filer for lobbying purposes. It's just a change. So again, these are the mandated changes. Then we were allowed by the state to make a couple of other changes. Um, under our current law, our current interpretation, we have this provision where you have to give, uh, you have to state when you have interest in a business. Um, and under our current interpretation, the way we wrote it in the, uh, in the, in the instructions there, we have interpreted this as including obviously stock, when you have stock in a particular company, but also mutual funds. Um, the state has long actually exempted mutual funds from that requirement. We haven't done that. The latest legislation also excluded ETFs from that requirement, exchange, exchange traded funds from that definition of interest. So what we're proposing is to, like the state, um, redact, take out ETFs from the definition of interest, and also just to sort of overturn our longstanding administrative interpretation and take out mutual funds. So henceforth, you won't have to, we won't have to report mutual funds on these statements. And again, that's something that the state authorized us to do, assuming the bill passes, of course. Um, currently, filers also have to disclose indebtedness to business entities doing business with the county on their financial disclosure statements. The state changed this to require that you only had to disclose them when they were doing business with your particular agency. Um, and of course, you know, as you know from filling out this form, that was always kind of a difficult part of the form to fill out anyway. So we're proposing that as well, that you only have to disclose these things in your annual financial disclosure when the, when the entity is doing business with your own agency. Again, that was something that we were allowed to do by the state in their letter to us. A few other changes, the, the law has long contained this very strange section that required the county executive to come to the county council every year with a list of firms that we would use, uh, that the Ethics Commission could use as outside counsel when the Ethics Commission decided that it couldn't use me, uh, maybe because I was conflicted out, or the executive director of the Ethics Commission to do the work of the Ethics, of the executive director of the Ethics Commission. It was this very strange section, uh, because it required us to come once a year, which would have been a tremendous burden. And it, it had this provision that you may be familiar with from stuff that I've brought to you before, that basically allowed initially us, and then the executive, and then the council to reduce or zero out the invoice of, of the person. So in other words, if the council decided, if the commission decided that it needed outside counsel, and the outside counsel did all this work, they send a bill to the commission, and the commission could reduce it, I could reduce it, or maybe the executive could reduce it or bring it down to zero, or the council could reduce it or bring it down to zero. And what it's modeled on is something that you remember probably from a little while ago. We have this provision in our law that if I decline to defend somebody and in a civil case, and that person prevails in the civil, civil case, then they can present us with the outside counsel's, um, invoice, and I have to approve it, and then the executive has to approve it, and then the council has to approve it. You've seen a couple of these things over the past couple of years. But in that case, if the, if the council decided not to pay the bill, the lawyer would still have the recourse against the client, right? In this particular case, under this section of the code with the, with the, the lawyer wouldn't have recourse. In the end, what we discovered was, we've never done this. We've never done this provision, and I have asked back for years, people have been here forever, we've never brought the council to this list. So I looked through the codes of other jurisdictions, and I proposed to adopt something that I took from the Howard County Code that just provides that if the commission decides that it needs outside counsel, the county, the county government will find the funds to provide money for outside counsel, and then we'll go through the normal process for finding outside counsel. So I want to get rid of that provision of the code, which has never been workable anyway, um, and just make a provision, copying it from Howard County, just requiring us to give the Ethics Commission outside counsel when they decide on their own that they need outside counsel. The final big part of it is also in two thousand and seventeen, the General Assembly decided that the members and employees of the Boards of Liquor License Commissioners of the counties would be subject to the state ethics law and subject to the jurisdiction of the State Ethics Commission. And I believe the way they wrote the law is they directly preempted the county's authorities to, um, to, to legislate, um, for those people. Um, I can tell you, and, and there's a little bit of a problem with the, the bill, the way they did it. It was, uh... It was clear that the employees had to take the state training. It was less clear whether or not the members of the boards had to take the state training. The employees have to do the financial disclosure statement, the way it was written for the board members, they could do the limited financial disclosure statement. There's a bill in the General Assembly right now to fix all that. It's already passed the House, it crossed over in time over to the Senate, and there's no reason to believe that it won't pass. But in any case, this bill, you know, the way we read the law is that we're preempted from regulating the Board of Liquor License Commissioners or its employees because of the way that bill was written. I think that we were directly preempted. So I'm proposing to take them out of our law, knowing that they currently are regulated by the State Ethics Commission. And I think that that came from some cases that we read about in another county. So this is, again, it's more, it's more housekeeping. The other thing, one other thing that, a couple of other things that we noticed, and I don't remember what I did after the last election, was, right now, you'll recall that the law that we enacted in two thousand and eleven provides that we post the financial disclosure statements of elected officials on the website. And the way the law was written, remember, they're due April thirtieth of each year. And so the way the law was written was that we posted, starting May one, you know, until the next April twenty-nine or thirty or whatever, and that's when I changed them. But obviously, we're going to have a crop of new members of the county council, or at least a couple of new members, or one, I guess, I don't know whatever the numbers are.
None.
One new member of the county.
None.
I'm not counting.
Just one.
One new, one new member of the county council. And so what I'm proposing now is to allow us to post that a little bit earlier when that member comes onto the council. So the election, as you know, happens in November, the person will take the seat in December, and at some point after that, we'll post it, just to put that up there. And then the final thing, and this was kind of something that really came out of the training, some questions that we got from the training, there is a definition of lobbyist in the code. And we have always interpreted it as not including those community associations when they come here before us unless they also spend money on, you know, food and beverages for you guys while they're lobbying stuff. And then from the training and then from a question that came up, I realized that I had made a mistake in a code, and it's always been done that way. No one's ever, you know, gotten into any kind of problem over this. We've always interpreted it that way. But I looked at it very carefully for purposes of the training when we were doing the training. And then a question that came up in the training, and I realized that in a bill that I had done in nineteen ninety-nine, that was just a code revision bill that wasn't meant to make substantive changes, where the old law, and it was written a little bit differently in terms of the way it was structured, but where the old law talked about person, I changed the reference from person to individual. And the reason why that was a problem was, person, of course, can also mean an entity, like a business entity, but when you say individual, it means an individual person. And so it did inadvertently change the meaning of the law. And it might have, if we'd ever thought more about it, called into question that issue with the community associations, even though because of other issues in the law, we had always interpreted it as not catching them up anyway. But anyway, this bill proposes to correct that mistake that I made back in nineteen ninety-nine and change the references to individuals back to person to make sure, you know, even more so that it keeps out any issue with the community associations and the business entities that otherwise don't engage in these other practices. And it's really, it was really designed to keep us from, to allow people to come in and testify, you know, as representatives of community associations. And again, it's never been a problem because there's always been enough in the other law, in the rest of the law, that it's never been an issue. But I just spotted it really while I was working on the training. And then one question came up in the training and I realized that, I went back and looked at the history and realized that I had made a mistake in ninety-nine. And so I'm just asking the council to allow me to change it back to what it should be, which is to say person. And then, you know, there's a grammatical error in there and then a bill we did a few years ago that took out the word objects or something. And so I want to throw that back in there. So again, the bill is mostly housekeeping, but, and things that we're required to do, and I hope the council will support it.
Mr. Fields, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. Can you, can you, can you start from the beginning? All I heard was the part about housekeeping. Can you start after that part there?
Hey, look, you all enjoyed the training, right? Everybody said, everybody said I enjoyed the training.
I enjoyed my training.
Absolutely.
Everybody said I enjoyed the training. I know the council likes talking about this stuff.
Yes, Councilman Katz.
Yeah, just, just to clarify this. So if you have a community association that spends a thousand dollars on information for the council or has a banquet or something like that and spends...
Well, the food might change. If you're invited to something where there's food and it's intended to influence you, then that wouldn't get you out of this.
No, when you say you, you mean the community association?
The community association.
Okay.
Yes. If they're doing it in connection to some kind of legislative action and there's food, I got to find the section, then arguably they'd have to register as a lobbyist.
So you would have to, also, I guess, I would have to ask them how much it's worth? Because I might have to report it as well, I guess.
Yeah, that's a different, remember that there's, there's certain exceptions for meals for elected officials.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah.
Just hot pretzels.
I'm trying to find this section. So what it currently says is lobbyist, or what it will say when we're done, is lobbyist does not include, it currently says an individual, but I'm proposing to change it to a person who strictly appears, and again, persons are, you know, these entities, appears at public hearings at the county council or county agency board or commission if the individual, and now I want to change it to person, does not engage in other lobbying activities in connection with the passage or defeat of council actions or the approval or disapproval of actions of the county agency board or commission, and, and it's important that that "and" is in there, expend money on food, entertainment, or other gifts for a public official in connection with the appearance.
So...
If there is money that's spent on you for in connection with the issue, then they wouldn't be exempt from, from the requirement to register as a lobbyist. But most of them are just citizen organizations that come here and speak to you. Right? I mean, I don't know, you know, because I'm not there, but it's really, and the thing is, for other reasons, we never caught them up anyway, but I just wanted to clarify that here as well.
So if a community association during the CZMP process produces a document that costs a thousand or two thousand dollars, they would be okay?
Right. And remember, there's also a slightly different, I mean, I think the answer to that question is yes. I mean, remember also, the rules for the CZMP are a little bit different. You file with the secretary unless you engage in, unless you do other things that are called lobbying. And again, we have to go back over the definition of lobbying. But, yeah, so...
One more clarification, and I'll use Mr. Moxley as a example. He's back there. He's raising his hand. Mr. Moxley was a former member of the council. So his, he is a liaison between the state legislature and the county council. So the first year that he had that job, would he have had, would he have any restrictions on what issues he could express the administration's views on?
Well, there's a specific exception for people who make appearances as part of the official duties of a duly elected or appointed official or employee of the state or a political subdivision of the state where the United States provided the appearances not on behalf of another entity. So if he was appearing in front of you for Mr. Caminits, then he fell under that exception. And that exception has been in the law for a long time.
Okay, good.
And I'm not even changing it because the word individual never appeared in there.
Okay. Thank you. You're okay.
Any more questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Almond.
Mr. Fields, I would just like to thank you for fabulous ethics training. I thought you did an incredible job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was fun to do, actually, in the end.
Good, good.
I mean, it was a lot of work to put it together, but it was...
I'm glad somebody was having fun.
We enjoyed doing it. I think I speak for Ms. Dubin as well. I think we enjoyed it.
Any more questions or comments? Well, Mr. Fields, we thank you and appreciate all your efforts in this task of increasing the ethics law. And I'm already on there as required in terms of sponsoring it. So I invite my colleagues to sponsor the bill if you'd like to be added as a sponsor.
I'd like to be added as well.
Yes.
Mr. Secretary, same thing?
Ditto.
Yeah.
Me too.
We're all, we're all about ethics.
Todd Campbell doesn't want to. He's off. He's out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. I suspect it'll pass now that it has so many co-sponsors. Next, we will go to page nine, and we will talk about Bill thirteen dash eighteen through seventeen dash eighteen. This is charter, county charter amendments or changes. And we'll ask Mr. Ted Venatoulis to please come up and take the chair, and you can explain these things to us. And while you make your way, I guess I want to thank you for your many, many years of public service to Baltimore County. For those that don't know, Mr. Venatoulis was a county executive from nineteen seventy-four through seventy-eight. He was a member of the planning board for Baltimore County from seventy-eight through seventy-four. He's been a member of the Social Services Board of Baltimore County from seventy-four through seventy-eight, a member of the Regional Planning Council from seventy-four to seventy-eight, the Governor's Commission to Study Revision of the School Construction Program from seventy-six to seventy-seven, and a member of the Port High School Commission, Maryland Port Commission of two thousand and seven. And of course, he was a chair of the County Executive's Transition Team in two thousand and ten. Mr. Venatoulis, seems like you needed another job. We gave you the Charter Review Commission. Yes, Councilman...
Yeah. I'd like to echo the chairman's sentiment. The last year, when I was chairperson, I had asked Mr. Venatoulis if he would lead this effort with a really important charter review, and he graciously accepted. And, I mean, the whole county council is very, very appreciative of your leadership and your work, and I just can't thank you enough for giving so much time, you and the whole committee, you know, countless hours and hours to really read the actual charter along with Mr. Petticord and Mr. Boswick and Mr. Field. And you guys really did great public service. So I just want to really commend you and thank you so much for your leadership and your ability to bring lots of different opinions together. I did want to echo that as well.
And Councilman Marks?
Yeah, I was very proud to be the sponsor of the legislation that passed with unanimous support, that put this on the ballot to create a charter review process. Seventy-eight percent of Baltimore County's voters supported this. It is nice to pass legislation that will live long past your service on the council, perhaps past your own lifetime. And I think we did something very good here. We created an automatic process for reviewing the framework for Baltimore County government. You were an outstanding choice by the county executive, and the committee that was put together was a very serious collaborative panel. Thank you again for your service.
Well, thank you all. Where were you guys when I ran for governor?
In kindergarten.
First of all, I want to thank you for all those accolades. That was great.
I didn't mean that as an insult.
No, I understand. I love your humor. The first thing I want to do, though, is I want to commend Michael Fields. This, I've been, as we've evidenced in public life for a long while, I have never heard an attorney apologize for a mistake. Michael, good for you.
They normally guess double bill and keep it moving, right?
Yeah, right. Anyhow, first of all, I want to commend you all for the folks you chose for the commission. They were outstanding. I mean, really outstanding. We had a lot of discussion, but no bickery. They all made substantial contributions. They were knowledgeable. They read their material. They, they were thoughtful, and we were able in some way to, even on the issues we really debated very extensively, come to a consensus on just about every issue. And I have to tell you, it was a remarkable group, and I've had to chair some of these in different, in different fashions. We, to talk about a procedure, we never, all eleven, all number of us, I think it was eleven, met at every meeting. There were no committees, no subcommittees. We all met as a group. There were very few absenteeism, maybe one or two on a particular occasion when they could not make it, but that was it. Every member attended mostly every commission meeting. And that, again, is unusual for the amount of work in the subject area that they, that they did. We were totally transparent, by the way, so you understand. That was a big issue with us, and we were determined that we would be transparent. There were no private meetings. The commission had no private meetings. We were open to the community, to, and many of them came, and they were able to talk at any meeting in an organized way. We had a couple of public meetings where we specifically marketed it and invited the public, but we invited the public for every meeting. And I think that was important because it is the kind of thing that you'd hope the community would be interested in. It's a little esoteric, but that's the way charters are. So procedurally, I think we organized it in a very exceptional way. But substantively, let me tell you how we did it. First, we reviewed the charter article by article. And all of us then became familiar with the blessings of the staff and their contribution. They were terrific. They made it, made life very reasonable for us. So we went through article by article. Some issues could not be resolved early on, but we looked at them and then made our judgments. And then, then the second way we did it was to go by issues. We then attacked each major issue, making sure that we discussed, I think, most every issue that was raised originally by any member of the council. I hope we did that. We tried to make sure we listened to you, to your representative, and made sure that we covered those issues specifically. There were other major issues that had not been suggested, but we went through those. We went through any of the major issues that the members of the committee were advocating or suggested we look at. So it was a dual approach, and as a result, I think it was done pretty thoroughly in terms of first, the article by article and then by the major issues. I'm going to touch on them because you all have to look at them. You all have to, I think, pass some legislation, if I'm not mistaken, and then you will have to put it on the referendum, which is, I think, a really good, a good process. First of all, we cleaned, there were no, let me put it, there were no major things that we did. Understand that. This was not a radical exposure. This was not revolutionary. We felt that the county was working properly, that the charter was very reasonable. It just needed some tuning up and some, at least looked at some more contemporary issues. But essentially, we felt the county was in good shape in terms of its charter. So the first thing, or one of the things that we did was to clean it up in terms of its technical aspects. For example, we made it gender. We corrected the gender aspects of it, which were really outdated. And you're quite welcome. But I'll tell you, it was a mess because, you know, these things were drafted and they continued because, quite frankly, it was very difficult to do that in terms of a secretary or clerical matter. But this, the staff here undertook it. And I think when you read the charter, you'll appreciate the changes that were made in terms of that. And there were others, some technical aspects about who's on what boards and some consistency. Want more on that, you can invite the staff. But they were the minor ones that needed to be strayed at. We may have missed some. Maybe the next charter commission will do it. Or you can do it yourself before you send it on... Or you can do it yourself before you send it on, on referendum. The second aspect were the more difficult issues, the more controversial ones, the ones that could've changed things. And most of those we did not do. We did not change the size of the council. And that was, uh, rec, that was part of a discussion. Some people did feel that that maybe we should do that, that the county had grown. Um, our general consensus with the county hasn't quite grown enough. If it gets to a million people, then maybe reconsider, uh, the amount of members each councilman represents. But we felt that there were unintended consequences of, and one of the things we tried to avoid, doing something that would create or produce an unintended consequence. That there'd be budgetary issues that would be associated with an increase in the size of the council, including staffing and, uh, facility and space. And, uh, there were a host of things. But we decided not to increase the size of the couns, council. We, um, did not proceed with term limits. Uh, there was some discussion about that and it's something that's done in some places. I've noticed in my own experience that where they have term limits, they wanna get rid of them. Um, I, we did not think that it was a helpful thing, that part of having a, a council person, um, have experience, we thought was important. And that, uh, if they wanted to throw somebody out, let them throw somebody out. Their first term, their second term, that's a public decision. So we did not proceed with that, which was, uh, uh, an, an element of big discussion. We, um, did not change the power of the council to increase the executive's budget. We just felt that that would've produced an unintended consequence. First of all, I didn't get any impression from any of the members of the council that they wanted to do that. And I think you're wise about that. I think it would open up to a, uh, I don't know, the kind of, there's always some exchanges in log rolling and give and take and creating a budget. But that would've, uh, changed the dynamics of it. And the dynamics of the relationship between the executive and the council. And we felt, outside of one or two things, that those relationships, forget the politics of it, seemed to work reasonably well in how the council holds its power, how the executive holds its power, and the balance they try to, they try to create. So there were other issues. And, uh, if you wanna raise them, I'd be happy, or the staff would be happy to discuss. But that was, uh, essentially, there were, uh, the approach that we took was really a cautious one. That we would pay attention to the community, examine the reality of politics, balance how the charter currently operates and how it might operate in the future. We tried not to disturb the balance of power between the executive and the council. And on one of the major issues, and I'm sure you guys will discuss it, how an executive responds or relates to the council, it's a tricky one. If the council wants something from the executive, a constituent service, a pothole to be fixed, that executive, if he or she is smart, should do it. The executive's constituency is the same as the council's. There's no difference. And, uh, an executive has the different response, well, both branches have a responsibility responding to all the citizens, but the council has to lean on their own district. And the executive's responsibility to look at everybody. And if a councilman is not happy with that, there are other techniques of, I don't wanna use the word retaliation, but of retaliating if you're, if you feel that you're not being treated properly. Putting it in the charter was extremely difficult. And finding language for it that could insist that an executive respond to a councilman or a councilman could do this to an executive if he'd not, simply wasn't, there wasn't anything rational about it. At least that, that we thought. It's a problem. It's always a problem. Look at the Congress and the president. I mean, you know, it's, it's just something that has to be reconciled within the balance of power structure that we have. So I, I, you know, I could go on, but I think there were some of the key things. And once again, I wanna thank you, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, Tom. Uh, it was an enjoyable task. And I wanna again thank the members for the people that they selected. You really picked a good group and they should be commended for their activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions of the staff if you have them.
Well, why don't we start with some questions? And we have a few speakers. Uh, Councilman Katz?
Yes, thank you.
What we'll do, we'll, uh, when you ask your question, uh, we will sorta just lump 'em all together, thirteen through seventeen dash eighteen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ted, uh, looking at, uh, Bill, which one is it? Sixteen eighteen. Uh, I think this is, is that the one? The one dealing with, uh, the county council now has to approve, uh, if, if a, I think, a certain member of the administration, if the county executive fires that particular person, the county council has to approve of that person's removal. I believe it's, uh, is it the office of planning? Is that the?
Planning director was always that way, I think. Now, did, I don't know if we changed that or not, but the plan.
It is the planning director, yes.
It is the planning director.
This bill addresses the manner in which the planning director is removed. And for consistency purposes, the commission felt that the county executive should appoint all department heads and have the authority and power to remove all department heads. With the exception of those, several officers who serve a term of office, the zoning commissioner, the deputy zoning commissioner, and the people's council. Otherwise, the, the department heads are all appointed by the county executive. And with that one exception of Department of Planning also removed by the county executive. And the commission felt that there should be consistency with all department heads. So that is a change that is made by one of the bills.
And, uh, what, you know, I thought about this. Now, why did the original drafters of, of the county code do this? And the only reason I could come up with, and maybe this does have merit, uh, during the CZMP process, the question is, uh, the office of planning, who do they work for? Do they work for us during that time?
Well, that was, that was a tricky one. They, they do in many ways because you are the kind of mayors of the zoning process in your districts. But essentially, the planning board, at least as I looked at it when I was in, really had a responsibility for the entire county. And therefore, it should be an essential arm of the, an intellectual arm of the county executive. Originally, and, and you're right, the, the drafters felt that the planning department head, if the executive wanted to fire him, that firing should be approved by the council. Uh, let me give you my own experience there that might be helpful. Cause I felt, I agree with the idea that we should make all department heads consistent. That the executive should appoint them. And if he wants to remove them, in order to emphasize the executive's authority, he should be able to remove them themselves. I may have been the first executive who fired a planning director. It wasn't any fun. Uh, but I didn't think he was smarter than me. And quite frankly, I thought most anybody working for me should be smarter. Because, uh, you know, that's, I didn't have the experience. And I felt planning, as I mentioned, was the intellectual wing of the, uh, county. And it, it was really important. And he just wasn't up. He used, he was always telling me what I, he thought I wanted to hear, which was not the way I particularly operated. So I asked him to leave. He said, "No, I've got five votes on the council and they're not gonna want me to leave." And I said, "Uh, Bill, you know, this is a tough process. You may have five votes now, but that won't last. They're playing you against me and that's the way politics are. You oughta do that. But please, you're gonna hurt your career. Don't, don't do this." He said, "I got five votes." Well, it wasn't long before I had five votes. Whatever I had to give, I gave, uh, blah, blah, you know? And I got the five votes. And we had to fire him. We had to let him go. The council voted with me. Last time I saw, he was teaching judo at the YMCA. I don't know, whatever it was. But anyhow, it, I think it, it increases the politicalization of the planning department. And that you oughta try to keep as much out of politics as possible. And that's, I think, important. Michael, you have something?
Can I, I just wanna add a couple of things.
Just to be clear, you did say council members got something out of it?
They did, indeed.
Okay, alright, that's all I need to hear. Go ahead.
I can't remember what each one got, but they each got something.
Just to be clear about a couple of things. The language that's in the current charter right now had to be changed anyway because really, the way it's written right now is the planning and zoning director, as it's currently called in the charter, could stay for as long as he wants unless he or she is fired, the way it's written. It says, "The director of planning and zoning shall serve until he shall resign or be removed upon the recommendation of the county executive, approved by a majority vote plus, majority plus one of the total number of county council members established by the charter, by this charter." Read literally, it means that once you've appointed a, 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 a planning director, that person stays forever. But that's not been the practice. I mean, since at least, for as long as I've been here. And one of the things we take care of in, in one of these bills also is that executives have been willing to bring the names of, um, all the department heads at the beginning of the term. And even when they hold, when the executive gets reelected for a second term, it came up during Mr. Smith and it came up during Mr. Caminitz. And both times, even though it was subject to interpretation of the charter, the, the, both executives, both Mr. Smith and Mr. Caminitz, came back at the beginning of their second terms and said, "I'm gonna bring all these names forward again, um, to the county council, including the planning director, even if the director of planning," based on the way this is written. And frankly, the, the, there's similar language, or not similar language, but there's confusing language for the fire chief and the police chief, which we're also proposing to change, that made it seem like they can also stay until they decide that it's time for them to leave. So whatever, Mr. Katz, uh, Mr. Katz, you're probably right in the, the discussion here is probably correct to some degree about the council's view of the planning director and the CZMP and all of that. But the truth is, the literal language of the charter also didn't really make any sense because it was basically a lifetime, the way it's currently written, it's a lifetime, a lifetime appointment unless we actively, unless he resigns or we actively get rid of her. So that needed to be changed at some point. And then just the practice has been, at least over the last four terms for executives, has been to bring all of the names of all, including, um, including, and, you know, it also sort of keeps it from getting ugly.
And I, and I think that brings additional power to the council that, uh, each executive successfully, successively has to bring their entire cabinet in front of the council. And therefore, you have the opportunity to, uh, to dismiss or not vote for that particular person.
That's not clear from the charter and one of the bills does that, even though Mrs. Morrison can tell you that's, that we've done at least, that's been the practice for at least the Smith and Caminitz administrations for, at the every, you know, at the beginning of every term, even when Mr. Caminitz was having the same people, he brought them to the council. So it's, it's, it's turned out to be a good practice, I think, which is why the commission was, was interested in codifying it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wade.
Thank you. Any more questions before we move on to the speakers?
Well, we must've done a pretty good job then, huh? That council member. Don't forget to thank them yourself. They were really terrific.
Alright, thank you. Uh, what we'll do now, in the same vein, we will call, uh, Ms. Lynn Jones. And, uh, we'll go with Mr. Michael Luttrellie and then Kathy Luttrellie. Those three people have signed up to speak on fifteen dash eighteen and eighteen dash eighteen. So we'll certainly give you, uh, more time to discuss both of those items. No, we just did them all. We didn't do? Oh, right, right, we didn't do eighteen dash eighteen. No, we do, we're doing the fifteen dash eighteen and, uh, okay, we'll just do fifteen. Okay, absolutely. Alright, Ms. Lynn Jones, you're gonna come up in, uh, fifteen dash eighteen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lynn Jones of, uh, I'm president of the Sparks Glen Co. Community Planning Council and I'm a lifelong resident of Baltimore County. And I'm here to discuss Bill number fifteen dash eighteen. I think it's important to allow our county voters to decide as to whether this bill should pass in order to obtain extension of sixty-five days for the council to vote on legislative bills instead of the forty days, which is now in effect. Having such a short span of forty days makes it exceedingly difficult for those of us who are trying to keep up with what's going on within our government. Most of my neighbors and our residents work during the day and find it next to impossible to attend these work sessions themselves. Thus, they miss out on proposed bills in their discussions. Sparks Glen Co. and other community groups in the county usually meet only once a month, at most bimonthly or quarterly. Having this bill extended to sixty-five days would make it that much easier and more productive for these groups to communicate with their members, to discuss, take votes, and address the council about these bills. I understand that even the review commission recommended to extend this bill to sixty-five days. Thank you for your consideration.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Michael Luttrellie?
I'd like to wish a good afternoon to the council.
Good afternoon, sir.
I'm Mike Luttrellie. I'm a resident of the Orchard Hill area of Lutherville, represented by Mr. Katz. The previous speaker took a lot of the wind out of my sails. I agree with all of her points. About the lack of time, uh, to, to really know what's going on when you're working a full-time job and chasing, you know, half a dozen kids around. I'm here to voice my support for, uh, both of these bills, fifteen and eighteen dash eighteen. Uh, they both, they're both cogent, common sense moves to revise the, the county charter. They're, they're very decisive, uh, to increase transparency in county government matters, uh, which is a very good thing. I think twenty-five years is much too long to wait to, uh, start revising the charter. And I think the, as Mr. Venatoulis has said, the, uh, the review commission has done a, seems to have done a very good job. And, um, I'll try to keep it short and sweet cause it's turning into a very long meeting. And again, like I said, I support fifteen and eighteen eighteen.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Kathy Luttrellie? Fifteen dash eighteen.
Thank you for that. I was trying to follow the, the badminton game from the back. Um, so I'm Kathy Luttrellie and thank you very much for, uh, hearing me out today. I'm gonna take a little different perspective than the, than the others. I often think in terms of parallels. So I started thinking about the decision-making process. And then I realized decision-making isn't reaction. So reaction is like somebody turns left in front of your car and you slam on the brakes and you don't even really think about it. You're just in self-preservation mode. What we're talking about today, though, is a real decision. It's, it's making, taking the time to take the time to make a decision. And I really don't see why we would even really kinda be talking about this. I see only goodness here in going from the forty days to the sixty-five days. You know, in a legal sense, uh, what are we told? Don't rush to judgment. So why rush a bill through? Um, if it's good out of the box, it'll be good after ten days. It'll be good at twenty, it'll be good at forty. And if it's still good at sixty-five, we got a winner. And then you don't have to walk things back as you realize what the implications might have been. You all are, um, a really busy bunch of, of, of seven of you. And I know you don't work just this job. This isn't your full-time jobs. Why not give yourself? job, this isn't your full-time jobs, why not give yourselves more time? Give the citizens more time to consider what's going on? You know, the other parallel I could come up with in the real world has to do with when you walk into a, a retail situation, and somebody rushes you and says, "This is a great deal, but you've got to decide it right now."
Right away.
You know, you've got the hour to do it. That's kind of what you're doing to yourself with the forty-day thing. So why not make it sixty-five? I can't think of any reason why not. If it's good at forty, it's going to be, you're going to be really sure of it at sixty-five, and it'll save you a lot of time in not having to redo things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Beth Miller?
Ah, okay. I just want to thank the council and the chair for bringing these issues forward from the commission report. I want to thank the commission for their commitment to transparency and their service. I'm Beth Miller, representing the Greenhouse and Alliance today. I did attend a number of the charter review commission meetings, I was very interested in the process. And just, again, I think our process is a little confusing, so I'm supporting bill fifteen dash eighteen, extending the bill life. In addition to agreeing with all the other comments, I think it's also an important provision that will allow amendments that are made to bills to have an opportunity to be discussed in a work session. The current time really does not allow for any amendments that are made after a work session to be discussed publicly, or even, sometimes even seen publicly before a vote. So I think that's a really important part of this bill. I'm also in support of eighteen dash eighteen, again, just in terms of providing additional transparency to the process. And I'm also supporting bill nineteen eighteen from Mr. Marks. You know, certainly as the Greenhouse and Alliance, we support anything that would include planning and implementation of pedestrian and bike mobility and traffic calming within the Department of what would now be called Transportation and Infrastructure. I think I got that correct. So those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilman Katz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the commission for the recommendation of expanding the number of days that a bill can be considered from forty to sixty-five. I don't know if it was when Councilwoman Bevins or Councilwoman Almond, Ms. Chairman, I put in legislation to expand the number of days from forty, and I was told at the time, "Why don't you just, you know, withdraw the bill because the commission, that's one of the issues that they will consider." So I'm very pleased that you've done this. And what happened actually is, for a number of meetings, at the very last minute, amendments appear. I mean, sometimes they're multi-page amendments, and you've had no chance to read them. And I thought, well, why can't we just special order the bill for two weeks so that we all can consider the amendments? And so that's really why I put this in, and plus it gives the public more opportunity to comment on the legislation. For instance, and dealing with the cannabis legislation that Councilwoman Almond put in, I'm going to put in a, an amendment to the bill, we didn't include daycare centers.
Include what?
Daycare centers. Just realized it. And, you know, the, the, I don't think we want marijuana distribution centers near a daycare center. So we had schools, but not daycare centers. So, so, you know, these are always things that come up, and, you know, this may have come up earlier, you just never know. So anyhow, I think this is really a good idea, and I think this will help us do a better job than we're already doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Katz. On that note, I guess we will move right along to bill. Any, any more comments on bills thirteen through seventeen? Nope. Move right along to page thirteen, Bill eighteen dash eighteen, Mr. Katz and Mr. Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, this legislation, what it will do is it will give the members of the council or a majority of the council the ability to ask the administration for certain information. And, you know, through the three and a half years that I've been here, getting information from the administration at times has been like pulling teeth, to be honest with you. You know, we represent community associations, and community associations consider many issues. And they come to their council member expecting, you know, that we're going to be able to get the information for them. And sometimes, you know, we have difficulty. I had one constituent, well, I had a lot of them do this, but file Freedom of Information Act with the Produce for the People program. And that's what it took to get the information from the administration as to the cost of the greenhouse, whether or not we were going to hire people, whether there are going to be volunteers, et cetera. So, and the, the other issue, I know that many members of this council get requests from constituents regarding roads in your district. You know, this road needs paving, that road needs paving. Now, the Public Works has a list of every road in every council district, and has rated the condition of that road, whether it be good, fair, poor, et cetera. And that list would be very helpful to me, representing my district. Because let's say somebody calls and says, "Oh, wait, our street needs repaving." Like, the community I live in, where there's very few cracks, but because the road is going from black to gray, the community thinks it needs to be replaced. Well, actually, the condition of the road is good. And I'd be able to tell them, well, the condition of the road is good, and there are other roads in the district that are rated poor, fair, so obviously you've got to hit the ones that are in bad shape first. So it would give me a way to let constituents know, in essence, where they are in the priority list. Now, I realize that I, I could only give them a general idea, because, for instance, let's say that the city is going to put new water lines on, let's say Sherwood Road. Sherwood Road is, is on the list to be repaved. Well, let's say last year they were going to put water lines in, that would be a perfect time to repave it as well as lay the water lines. So maybe that road would have gone ahead of another road that's in equal or worse condition. So there's always give and take. But the more information we have, the better we can serve our constituents, because people want to know, they want to know what the situation is, they want the information so that they can proceed with any plans they might have. So I think this is a very important amendment to the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Katz. Any questions or comments from the members? Okay, why don't we ask Ms. Lynn Jones to come up and speak? Good afternoon, Ms. Jones.
Hello again. I'm here to discuss bill eighteen dash eighteen, and I want to say Sparks Glen Co. is in favor of transparency within its government. We think it's imperative that the government be open to ours and other residents' points of view. There's no reason not to share information that concerns all taxpayers and other government employees, such as this county council's members, who are generally the go-between for information concerning neighborhood issues. Residents need to participate with their governing bodies in order to have a say as to how their taxes are being spent. This can only be accomplished when open communication is present. Please allow the people who pay our county executive's salary to have a say in the next general election. Thank you. And I just want to add too, I personally have had trouble in the past obtaining information through the Freedom of Information Act. I had to go through a gauntlet. The person in charge of the department where I was tried to push me off. I, I held steadfast, he, he demanded my driver's license, he took it. I was able to read the documents, I said I want copies made, he said, "You're going to have to take them down the street." So I bundled up all of this paperwork, trundled down the street to a printer, copied all of these, there was quite a stack there, and by the time I got back, the person who took my license was gone. So we had to find somebody to find my license. I mean, it was just, it was not a pleasant experience. I felt like they were grilling me, it was not an easy task, and I'm afraid it may still be going on today. This is just a few years ago. So it does happen, and we need to stop this. We're the ones paying salaries, so we can't forget that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'd also like to speak in support of this, this bill in front of the council. I've had a few problems with county government, too, trying to get information on different items. Mr. Koch has done a very good job helping us straighten out the twisted ball of yarn we've had to go through. This is a very good bill, the taxpayers are entitled to this information. I don't really know too many top-secret things that need to be kept from the public by the And I think it's, it's a very good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for listening to me. I, I guess, again, I'm going to take a slightly different tact. I, I come to you, I'm not a lifelong citizen of Baltimore County, it's about three years. I have a thirty-five-year background, though, in the federal government. I spent a lot of time working budget issues. I kind of know, and, oh, by the way, I'll date myself, and David will say he was in kindergarten when this happened, too, but, but, but I was hired right after the Pike Church Commission, you might remember them? The intelligence community was a rogue elephant, and, and so my whole thirty-five years was about, I worked for six different executives, you know? Like, they're called presidents, and, and so when the congressional staffers would come out and they would ask you questions, you better answer. Now, you know, we were told, answer the question that they're asking you, don't go all afield here, but I guess I just assumed until I got Mr. Koch's email yesterday, that when you all ask a question, you could expect an answer. And I'm just a little floored that somebody thinks that some department head, sort of the county version of the president's cabinet, can just ignore you. I'm just, I'm really appalled at that. And, and I guess the other piece of this is that I live in a really poorly functioning infrastructure in my community. It's, it's a, just like I'm a boomer, the community is a post-World War II boomer community, my house and me are the same age. The streets, the telephone poles, and everything else are the same age. And frankly, it's fallen apart. And so when Mr. Koch is up here talking about paving and all these other issues, those are, those are my, those are my issues. And it's, it's really frustrating to not be able to get answers, and I, and I apologize, sir, I, you know, sometimes when you would take a little time to get back, I thought it was, I thought it was at the council level. It's not the council level, it's these department heads. We pay their salaries, they need to be answering to us, to you, on our behalf. When you go to them and you say, "What's the status of this, or when is this going to be done, or how much does this cost?" Yeah, they need to be answering that. There's a real problem if they're not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me? Go ahead, Councilman Marks?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification to Mr. Peddicord, for the public to know. So should the county council approve this, it would require five votes, and the county executive cannot veto the bill, correct? It goes right to the ballot?
Correct, goes on referendum.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to, I guess, want to read one thing, Mr. Van Tules, is it true that the commission concluded that regulating the relationship of behavior, either be good or bad amongst members of the branches, is not charter material?
Yes. Some issues, one, that kind of activity, they're not called exactly, called charter. They're, they're in the charter, because it's so, not that controversial, it's just the relationship is so complicated, it's just like, you know, it's an important issue, by the way, that has to be addressed, the, the council, executive and the department. It's, it's, there are plenty of things in county, they're not satisfied with the response to it, that will always be, and, and, so, you just, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Katz?
Yeah, I, first of all, I, I would hope that this power would only be used when absolutely necessary. And, you know, at our, well, earlier today, I mean, we, I've heard many times from our own auditor that she's having problems getting information from the administration. So, I mean, we have a problem here, and people, the public, they deserve answers. All we want is information, that's all. And, so, thank you.
I mean, basically, what you're saying, this is, I mean, the charter is our constitution, it's not...
Okay. Any more questions or comments from the members? We'll move right along to bill nineteen dash eighteen, Mr. Marks.
Should these changes be approved by the voters, there will be a few simple changes made in the charter that require the new department to look at all transportation options such as bicycling and pedestrian movement. And I would like to read the words in the proposed legislation because I think they're very clear, very simple. This department shall be responsible for mobility, we're adding that, mobility, traffic safety and engineering, those are in there right now, using a variety of transportation options including highways, bike lanes, pedestrian improvements, and transit where appropriate. That is the meat of this legislation. It simply broadens the legislation of a department that was created in the nineteen fifty's. If you look at the existing language in the charter, it is a very nineteen fifty's oriented language. The Public Works Department since that time has traditionally had a highway focus. I believe we need to have a twenty-first century transportation department that has a charge to improve mobility across transportation modes. We are not mandating resources. We are not mandating manpower. We are simply saying that as part of the basic mission of this department, we look beyond highways. And I think a change in name is part of that. Since I was elected in two thousand and ten, we have changed the titles of several agencies, permits, health, planning, economic development. Let's give this agency a forward-looking twenty-first century focus. Let's let the voters decide on this. And I would like to pass out letters of support from the Transportation Alliance, from the Central Maryland Transportation Alliance, from Bike More, and from the Maryland Building Industry Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. I guess want to make a point of clarification. You mentioned all the other names that were changed. It should be noted those names were changed by the administration and legislation to this body. It was not changed by changing the charter. Correct?
Well, that's correct because we're now concluding a charter review process. And I think after six decades, this is a welcome change to the mission of this agency, which by the way, does a lot of good things. But I just think we need to be more progressive in how we look at transportation in this county.
Personally, I agree with how we look at transportation. I don't agree with changing the name of Public Works. Yes, Councilman?
I do want to say, I mean, I think the Public Works, obviously with Steve Walsh, does a great job, and I feel like almost every day I'm texting poor Steve on one issue or another to help out on. I would love to see Public Works, you know, really be more, you know, compensing, especially with bike lanes and pedestrian improvements in different transit options. I mean, I think that would be great to have even a wider scope. Obviously with a wider scope, there's more capital needs or more, more things to review. But I do think we need to move from just more of a paving-street type of focus to, you know, the bigger place where people can walk and bike and work and, yeah, sometimes drive, but also take things like the red line we should have had and other places to get places. So I understand what Councilman Marks is attempting here.
Councilwoman Alman?
Councilman Marks, did you consider just adding a Department of Transportation? I mean, the, it might be worth doing that rather than just changing the name of Public Works and adding more responsibility to them?
I think you need to have both transportation and infrastructure together, and I'll tell you why. We just had one of the speakers talk about when we have utility projects that impact roads. You really need to consider those both within a single agency. I also am keeping in here the requirement that you be an engineer. There are some people who think we should take that out, but in talking to a lot of the industry members, they think that that should remain in the legislation. Transportation and infrastructure work together, and I think they should be part of a comprehensive approach to our communities.
I look at it though a little bit differently, thinking that it's a separate issue because our infrastructure is one thing, and we know it needs work. But we also have transportation issues as far as traffic, as far as the Beltway, as far as trying to come up with things like you and I have talked about before with small buses in different areas and that sort of thing. So I kind of think of them working together but as separate agencies. Just my opinion.
Yeah, sure. Let me, and we've had discussions about commitment of resources. This doesn't commit any resources. The next county executive can decide however he or she wants to commit resources. But we need to have an intermodal focus. The very first legislation that I worked on as a council member, and I co-sponsored with Councilman Quirk, created the Baltimore County Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee. And one of the charges of that committee is to look at state funding, to go for grants. We've had a very conservative approach over the past seven years. We're not going for these grants. They're, you know, that's something where we should be looking for money outside of Baltimore County, but we don't do it because the focus of this department has been very highway-oriented and very conservative.
Agreed. But isn't it too the priorities of the administration that drives a lot of that?
It is the priorities of the administration, and this doesn't take away from the power of the administration. Ultimately, the county executive, when he or she submits her budget, allocates money to a department. This simply says that as a matter of policy, this department should be looking across transportation modes.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we start with Mr. Nate Evans? Mr. Evans?
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
I'm Nate Evans. I'm a resident of Prairie Hall, the fifth district. I'm also a member of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And this is one of the recommendations that we had looked at doing to really kind of help spur on some of the change that's needed in the Department of Public Works. Transportation is one of the fastest-changing industries there is going on today in the United States. We're looking at autonomous vehicles becoming more prevalent, transit vehicles becoming more accessible, ride-sharing, bike-sharing, and now we got a Hyperloop starting out down by the Inner Harbor. Who would have thought that five, ten years ago? So with all this really fast-changing technology with transportation, it's really important to modernize the name of the organization that is responsible for the county's transportation funds on that. Like the councilman said, this doesn't really change any funding, but this would really help kind of change the focus of where some of the available funding goes. Transportation isn't just paving roads anymore. While most of us today have probably drove to this meeting to get here, we can be sure that our kids probably are not going to be driving as much. So we want to make sure that we're looking at some of those changes to really modernize the department. Couple of changes I would recommend is that if we're looking at, if we're going to name bike lanes, pedestrian ways, and traffic coming, then we really need to also include some transit. That's going to be the really, the next wave of transportation that's going to change Baltimore County. I think that would be important to include. I do think that we need to remove the requirement of the department head being a professional engineer. While it's great to have that institutional background and that knowledge, we're seeing a lot of transportation departments not being run necessarily by engineers but by planners, by financiers, and under other industries as transportation becomes more diverse. So those are two changes I would make. Otherwise, this is a great bill, and I really support the charter moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Quirk?
If I could just recognize Nate Evans for all his work he does on pretty much a daily basis with, you know, bicycling and bicycling infrastructure and improvement, and definitely a visionary, and so we appreciate all your really hard work. And I hope the next county executive really embraces more of a walking, bicycling, really much bigger focus than just cars and roads. And, you know, candidly, I was in New York City last Tuesday. I actually met millennials that have never driven cars. They actually take anything but cars. And so this is something that's happening, and we need to be prepared for that. So we really need to have a, as a county, we have to have a much bigger focus, and I think we need more people like you helping to lead that way, for sure. So thank you for your work.
A pleasure, Councilman. Thank you. I have not known you since kindergarten, but I've known you since high school, and you've done a great work, so thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
Let me, let me just add a cautionary note. We are, for the most part, the suburbs. We're a long ways from New York City in terms of transportation needs. I certainly, it would take me a while to get here on a bike or walking, and I only live a couple of miles that way. But I don't want us to ever lose focus on things that are important to us, the infrastructure in Baltimore County. When you flush the toilet, you want it to work.
Afternoon, Council Chair, members of the council.
Yes, glad to do.
Echoing Mr. Quirk's, I think actually a lot of the people younger than me will never even have driver's licenses. Fascinating thing, but it's a little bit beyond the discussion of this. Josh Greenfeld, Maryland Building Industry Association, we support this bill. Baltimore County, from a development perspective and an infrastructure perspective, Baltimore County is a really built-out county. We're not likely to be adding a whole lot more roads. Most of our opportunities are in redevelopment and infill, and the future of transportation of this county, and to some extent already is, is going to look a lot different than how things were when I grew up in suburban Pikesville in the second district. And a department with the focus on these changing realities and priorities could help county residents get to and from school, work, and play in a safer, more efficient manner. And we think that this is something that the next administration and next council should endeavor to undertake. And I think it's interesting to keep infrastructure and transportation together. I'm just thinking of things like restriping, as was mentioned here. If you keep them together, a lot of more progressive, or a lot of progressive jurisdictions are taking the opportunity to do something like restriping as an opportunity to do a complete streets approach where you would add a bike lane, you know, change parking alignments to, or, you know, other things to make transportation safer, but also more efficient for the vehicle user. So I think that is an important thing to keep in mind. And I can't take an opportunity to a hundred percent agree with Councilman Marks because that would be very unlike us. I do agree with Mr. Evans that it would, it's probably a good idea to remove engineer from the requirements for the reasons Mr. Evans said. There are incredibly smart progressive thinkers that just aren't engineers. So I think that's an interesting concept. I actually hadn't considered before we sat down here today, but thank you.
Well, I'm going to let Councilman Marks speak, but it's interesting to hear the focus on transportation. And for, already, we have seen to have minimized all the other functions that the Department of Public Works do. Like I said, when you flush the toilet, you want those, that sewer to work. So all these other functions require an engineer's knowledge, but already, we are saying, "Those things are not important. Let's have a transportation expert running Public Works." Go right ahead, Mr. Marks.
No county executive...
Maybe that's why we should keep engineer.
Yeah, first of all, Josh, thank you for your work. I know your organization has been very involved in other areas. You understand it is good economic sense as we look at changing demographics and how people want to live in the future for us to be doing these things. So thank you very much. As far, just responding to the chairman, no county executive with any sense is going to make, is going to ignore basic utilities. No county executive is going to ignore the need to improve our utilities and our water lines and our sewer lines and all those sorts of things. This simply says that we're also looking at other options. As far as the qualification, if it, you know, if my colleagues would like to remove that, I'm certainly open to that. It actually increases the flexibility of the next county executive in picking whoever he or she wants to head this department. And that person's still ultimately going to have to be approved by the council. If it's something the council wants to do, I'm certainly open to that. That's an example of where you're giving the next county executive some more leeway. I'm open to that. I just, I would like to see this bill pass, and I'd like to give the voters the chance to vote on it. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to end that on a real simple note. The charter is our constitution, and a lot of these anecdotal issues in terms of who's the county executive and what his or her priorities are, and what they do and what they don't do, I just don't think we should be tinkering with our constitution that has served Baltimore County well just because today we feel that maybe this administration haven't given enough attention to bicycles, or today this administration didn't do, didn't answer my phone call and didn't give me a document because I want it. This is our constitution. We should not be, the bar to change it should be very, very high. On that note, let's move right along, or we already took care of that. We took care of that. I think, I think that's going to do it, right?
We have the art and entertainment district.
Oh, that's right. Boy, my expiration time has picked off. Go ahead, Councilman Marks. I mean, Councilman Quirk. Arts and Entertainment District, UMBC, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I did want to first acknowledge and thank several people in the back who have been waiting very patiently. Thank you all. I see that we have people from the Arts and Entertainment Committee, Shar Brooks, Bettina Tebow, and UMBC Director of Arts and Culture, Tom Moore, in the back. And then I see we have Baltimore County Arts Guild, Marilyn Maitland and Kirby Spencer as well here. Thank you all for your, your great work and really just enormous amounts of energy and time and persistence and tenacity and great stamina, along with other people like Jack Murphy and many others for their work on really bringing to fruition the Arts and Entertainment District. I see Fronda Cohen still in the back. Fronda, thank you. I know you've spent countless hours on this, along with Andrea Van Arsdale, who was here but may not be here. And so, bottom line, Resolution twenty-eight dash eighteen supports the designation by the Maryland State Arts Council of an Arts and Entertainment District in the Arbuthys in Catonsville area. Just wanted my colleagues to know, this is something that we have worked extensively with the administration, with Fronda Cohen, with Andrea Van Arsdale, with the, you know, the committee, with the Arts and Entertainment Committee, the Baltimore County Arts Guild. It's been a really extensive and very time-consuming process by most of the people in the back of the room, and Jack Murphy and several others. And so I just ask for your support. Obviously, if this Arts and Entertainment designation is approved, we will be providing different incentives to help arts and entertainment in southwest Baltimore County, but not only southwest Baltimore County, I mean, clearly benefiting the entire county as hopefully continues to bring in good consumers and people spending money throughout the county as well by promoting and focusing on the arts and entertainment. Now, I know we do have two speakers as well, but I just want to see if any of the, my council members have any questions or anything.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Go right ahead.
I just want to say, I've had the occasion to meet with the Catonsville Arbuthys Arts Guild, and I think you all are a model for Baltimore County. You're just the beginning, and that I'm hoping we will be expanding into more art districts along the way. But you all have really laid the groundwork and done the hard work, and we very much appreciate it. So thank you for all you do, and thank you for sharing with me what you do.
Okay. Councilman Cack?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if most of you know, but my wife grew up in the Arbuthys area, so I think this is a good thing. I have a question about the incentives, the property tax incentives. Are they copied from like the city's arts district, or, I mean, do we know that these incentives will work? Do they work elsewhere?
Yeah, they definitely work elsewhere. It really tries to bring in a lot more arts and culture by promoting, like, for example, there's a real property tax credit based on improvement values. You have a five-year real property tax credit if there's improvements assessed by at least a hundred thousand or more. And there's a ten-year, a hundred percent real property tax credit if an improvement for a property located in a district is over ten million, which would be wonderfully good investment. And so, yeah, incentives, credits, loans... And so, yeah, incentives, credits, loans, all help drive market forces. And also, some of the forces that may not always exist, you know, that maybe don't have tons and tons of profit, but could bring in good arts and, and entertainment to the area. So, yeah, these type of incentives definitely, definitely don't hurt, that's for sure. And I did want to let the council know that we worked very extensively. I see Brian Shepherd also, thank you for all your work in the back as well, because we all looked at the, the district very closely, including Mr. Fred Hillman. And, you know, made sure we could design a, a district that at least we could get this thing off the ground and running, and then look at it in the next several years to see if that district might be modified for maybe other places. But, yeah, I think this is something that the county can support without a huge fiscal note, and also see how it works. And if it works well, maybe we can look at other places as well.
But the, these credits, many of these are used in other locations then.
That's right.
Good, good.
That's right.
As a former school teacher, you know, if, if, if another math teacher did a good job on something, we just copy it.
That's right.
You know, there's nothing wrong with doing that. I mean, if it's successful one place, chances are we're successful here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of speakers. Ms., Mrs. Marilyn Maitland?
Maitland.
Maitland?
I'm the president of the Baltimore County Arts Guild. Not to correct the councilman, ever, ever, but it's not just the Catonsville, it's the Baltimore County Arts Guild. And I think that's very important for you all to hear as you make this decision, because one of the, this is a five-year-old organization who has been bringing the arts home. We very much appreciate the arts that are ongoing throughout the city and surrounding areas, but one of the things we'd like to do is have arts experiences close to home. And as an outgrowth of our arts experiences, we formed an Arts and Entertainment Council that has representation from throughout the county, Dundalk, Towson, Pikesville, throughout the county. And it is that council that looked at where the most prepared, or, I guess not prepared, but the most ready organization, area was for us to form an Arts and Entertainment District. And so, that's how we got started. But you're absolutely right. Once we have the concept in place, we're hoping to move throughout the, the rest of the county. And it's very important to understand that there are 25 of these districts in the state. So, they're already proven to be economic drivers, revitalization tools. And so, I'll only echo Councilman Cork's applause to everybody who you already mentioned took all my thunder, but certainly Brian and, and Fronda, and the county, the county executive, and you, Tom, for making this resolution come to the attention of, of everybody. We're most excited. With me is, as you already said, Tom Moore, the Director of Arts and Culture from UMBC. And UMBC has proven to be an extraordinary partner with us in this endeavor. And we're, we're, I think it was just a little bit ago, we said we're starting now to just call this the designated area and not talk about just Arbuthus or Catonsville, but it's linked together with UMBC. So, if Tom can come make a couple of remarks, I think it would be insightful for you, Tom.
Thank you. Yes, come on up, Mr. Moore. Good afternoon, Mr. Moore.
This might be a little off-topic, but I just want to say we really have a stellar men's basketball team. So, going to start off with that. And if you have time at 5, 5 o'clock tonight, there's a campus celebration. You can stop by, have fun. So, but we also have vibrant programs in the arts at UMBC. The New York Times has encouraged its readers to travel down to southwest Baltimore County to see cutting-edge art. I just received word that one of our dance students will be featured at the Kennedy Center and the American College Dance Festival in June. We really have national stuff going on. And I want to say that UMBC enthusiastically supports the creation of an Arts and Entertainment District in southwest Baltimore County. The state's goal for the A&amp;E Districts program is to develop, promote, and support diverse artistic and cultural centers and communities throughout Maryland that preserve a sense of place, provide unique local experiences, attract tourism, and spur economic revitalization and neighborhood pride. And as Marilyn just mentioned, there are 25 Arts and Entertainment Districts around the state. There isn't a single one in Baltimore County. We would love to change that pattern. When you look at the Arts and Entertainment Districts that are, that are around the state, from Cumberland to Silver Spring, there have been really substantial transformations in terms of economic revitalization and the, and the, the cultural vitality in the communities. The proposed district would include not only the most, not only most of the commercial revitalization districts in Arbuthus and Catonsville, but also, as you heard, the exhibition and performance venues at UMBC. And we have already an impressive level of arts activity in the areas. When you look at the Arbuthus Arts Festival, which is the largest one-day festival in the state, the Catonsville Arts and Crafts Festival, the, the work at UMBC, we have already more than 100,000 people a year coming to southwest Baltimore County to enjoy the arts. But I don't think people think of us as a destination point, and we'd like to change that. So, we at UMBC would like to support the continued revitalization of Arbuthus and Catonsville, help make county residents aware of the rich arts and cultural opportunities in their own backyards, and work with the county and the Baltimore County Arts Guild to create a sense of place and destination in the proposed district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cork?
Just very briefly, I know the, the afternoon is almost getting to the evening. And so, I really appreciate my colleagues, also your time and your patience. I did want to thank Tom Moore and UMBC. We were together recently with Freeman Robowski and, and the president, obviously Freeman Robowski, force of nature unto himself. He's excited about this Arts and Entertainment District, and he's also excited about the Patapsco Heritage Greenway that's happening in southwest Baltimore County. But as Marilyn said, too, this really is the Baltimore County Arts Guild, and it's just great to see this program off the ground and running. And so, did want to thank again all the people on this, in this group, that's really pushed this forward with Fronda, and with Brian Shepherd, and with everyone else, because it's been, it's been a really, really, really long process. Similarly, Catonsville rails the trails, the Baltimore County Arts Guild has a lot of stamina and tenacity, and they've spent countless hours on this. I just want to, again, acknowledge everybody and, and ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cork, any more questions or comments? Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming out to the, let's, to the work session today. Have a safe trip home. This will conclude the work session.